To order, if everybody would please join and join in the Fledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the law, by the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Chair moves for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Announcements. Facilities Committee meeting February 21st, right here at 7:00 a.m. And March 11th, Policy Committee meeting at 5:30, followed by the regular School Board meeting at 6:00 p.m. right here in this room. At this time, do we have any members of the public to address the board? I guess, Tom, did you need to come on up?
I'm down here, 6115, Sunnyfield Road. Just a couple questions here. One of the things we talked about, Kevin, the last time I was up here, you didn't know much about the security laws that were passed. Refresh your audits, called the Stop School Violence Act, May 22nd. Anyway, we're getting charged $7,360,000 for security to the general public when the government supplied something. I was wondering if, did you apply for that money, Kevin? Or, I'd like to know in writing if you did or if you didn't. And if you did get it, I was wondering how much that was. Anyway, some of the neighbors have questioned tennis courts, theater reboot, for a parking lot. And right over here, from this road all the way to Sunnyfield, close to the Ball Diamond, close to the theater, and all the Ball Diamonds in parks across the road would make a good parking lot. The grading would be easy. You don't have to move any fences. A few trees could go away. Tame Nupki down the road would take care of the trees. And would make a nice parking lot. Easy grading. It would save a lot of hassle and a lot of money. The neighbors are wondering why you have to move the tennis court when you've got a parking lot right in your front yard. It'd be a lot less walking to the theater. The other thing I'd like to find out is the cost and what it is for the sewer replacement. Is it inside the building, outside the building, for Shirley Hills and the high school? Because I haven't seen any sewer back up, and maybe there is, maybe there isn't. And do we have to jackhammer the floors out of the schools to replace all the sewer lines? And anyway, I'd like to have some of that come back to me in writing. In Grandview, you've got a new softener going in. And I'd like to know what the cost is on that and the foot size and what kind. I replaced all the softeners over at Manataca's ice reveal. And they seem to be doing pretty good. I'd like to bid on that particular job. I'd like to have that in writing also, please. Talking to the neighbors and a few other heating contractors and other maintenance people at different schools, like we're coming in at Manataca. They're wondering why we're getting rid of hot steam heat, which is your most efficient heat. Any boiler can be rebuilt for less than $100,000. That's per boiler. Now, if you've got two boilers, that'd be $200,000. Easy math. We're going to spend $6 million on this school alone to replace two boilers or whatever you have. Now, I always look at, being a contractor, you've got to get a payback. To go from 200, or maybe even 300, if you've got three boilers, to $6 million, you've got to save a lot of money to get a payback. Anyway. On the classes for, I'm talking to a lot of the students, parents, you know, talking about this delicious stuff. They're wondering about the classes for home ec, nursing, wood shop, welding, machine shop. What kind of classes are you going to have? And how much are you going to spend on that compared to the $6 billion for a boiler you don't have to replace?
Six what? Did you say $6 billion?
I think it's $6 billion. Million. I'm sorry.
Oh, you said billion. I was just correcting you.
Six million, yeah. Six million for a boiler. If you'd saved that money, you could probably put in a complete machine shop, welding shop, auto repair, and stuff like that. I don't know any of us that don't need a mechanic once in a while, or plumber, carpenter, or a nurse, or somebody that can bake a cake. So a button on your shirt. Anyway, I'd like to find out how much you're going to spend on that. I think you talked to somebody last fall, Kevin, or Brian, and they had mentioned that you said there wasn't much money available for that. Anyway, I'd like to find out how much money is allocated for these classes. And I think we all know that in '83, all that stuff got sent to China because we didn't need any carpenters, electricians, machinists, plumbers, anybody like that. No tradesmen. Everything was going to China. Everybody's supposed to fix their car with a computer, do their plumbing with a computer. That doesn't happen. I'm turning down jobs every day. And I've trained a lot of people to plumbing and heating, air conditioning. Taunaca Plumbing, there's two guys there. One of your old school teachers, Hanley, John Hanley, used to work for me. He's got his own business, doing pretty good. Two of my grandsons. Both of my boys are plumbers and heating. So I think they're doing pretty good. So I'd kind of like to know how much money is going to be spent for the tradesmen and the people that get their hands dirty once in a while. And they're pretty good jobs. And the other thing I'd like to know, when my youngest boy was going to graduate here, he could not go to the Hanepin County Votech because he had to ride a bus. Never rode a bus. He lives on the road. Anyway, there was a half a dozen guys that were going to quit. And when I went down to the school board and talked to them, they said, well, if they don't ride the bus, the first one would run away. I said, well, you expel them. The second one will think about it. The third one won't. They lost six guys that year. Now, I'd like to know how many we pay for, at that time it was 20-some classes we paid for at North and South Hanepin Votech, for inkage, whether it's printing or whatever, bodywork. And some of these guys that went into bodywork, doing pretty good. And they've just gone into any kind of construction or whatever it may be. But I'd like to know how many you're paying for, and how many are being used, and how many have to ride the bus? And if you give me all that stuff in writing, I'd sure appreciate it because I'm passing it out to different people in the district. I've had a lot of questions from a lot of different people. They're wondering why are these numbers, not just maintenance for the students? And that's fine for the students. But I don't know if the kids really make a difference if they get heated with a steam heat or hot water heat. What I have understood, a neighbor down the road is retired from Manataca schools, top of the line boilerman. And he said, I'd like to see the boilers. I'd like to talk to Ray. I'd like to have a tour to see how bad the plumbing and heating is. Replacing the copper plumbing. I think this school is full of copper. I wouldn't doubt if some of the other schools aren't full of copper, but why tear it out and replace it with the same stuff you got? My house was done in '64, copper, and it's still working. I've done a lot of work at Layla Lake. That was built the same time Shirley Hills, the oldest school you have. And there's copper in that school that's working. There's carbon eyes in that school that's working. It's not leaking.
Tom, thank you.
Okay. And you send me this stuff in writing. I appreciate it. Send it to P.O. Box 35. I got a mailbox down here, but it gets run over periodically. Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the student rep report.
All right. So, start by updating activities. So, our Student Senate just had our snowball dance on Saturday. And our Senate also just had Senate members Kendall Sabaski and Karen Childers travel to Arlington, Virginia for, it'll be a national student leadership conference. DECA just had the district competition on January 7th at Bloomington Jefferson High School, where a record 169 members made it to the state competition. So, that was a pretty big deal for DECA. Robotics team is over halfway through the season to competition, and they're meeting every day to get ready. Math league is ranked first in their conference and first in their section, and they scored a season high and school record of 67 points in the last meet. And they have their next meet coming up, and they're looking to go to the state tournament at that. Science Olympia just placed seventh in the regional tournament this past weekend. And the speech team just competed in the Prior Lake Tournament last weekend, where Orin Butterfield was a Marske finalist. The National Honor Society just started a campaign today to raise money for WeCan, and they're aiming to raise over $4,000 for a new freezer for WeCan. And then NHS is also in the process of planning the spring blood drive. Moving on to arts. MWHS Theater concluded their first one-act season in over 25 years with great success. The one-act play, which is called Koda Kramay, placed second at the two-way subsection contest on January 27th, and they got to compete at finals on February 3rd. They tied Manataca High School, and they competed against five other schools. So that was a big win after 25 years of not doing it. MWHS Theater has also begun its work on the 2024 spring musical Footloose. They already had auditions in late January, and it'll take place throughout April. Hilltop is now preparing for their operetta, which will be performed on March 1st and March 2nd in the PAC. And the elementary operettas are performed every three years. MWHS Band will perform their contest music in a preview concert next Monday, February 12th at 7:00 p.m. in the PAC. And our choir has a large group contest next Monday, February 12th, and the eighth grade honors choir is also playing there. MWHS has two semifinalists for Dorian. Senior Jack Hanson will represent our high school in the MN All-State Choir. And ninth grader Wade Sterlexen will sing in the MN grades ninth and 10th on our choir. And then for athletics, we have the Boys Semin Dive Team, have a few weeks left in their season, and they just had to meet on Friday. Girls Hockey just ended their regular season with a record of 17, 7, and 1, and they are seeded second in their section, and will start in the semifinals on Saturday. Boys Hockey is ranked third in their conference, and they have a record of 11, 9, and 1, with a few more weeks in the season. Boys Basketball is also finishing up their season and ranked in their conference. Girls Basketball is also continuing their season with three games this week. The Hawk Ex Dance Team was just named conference champions at the conference meet on January 21st, and then they are competing in sections on February 10th to hopefully make it to state again. The Wrestling Team just placed seventh at the Orno Invite on Saturday. And some notable outcomes include Jack Nelson in first place and Cole Monster Tiger with second. The Nordic Ski Team placed fifth overall at the conference meet on Friday, January 26th, and they will compete in sections tomorrow, along with Alpine Ski Team, who will also compete in sections tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any committee reports tonight, committee board? If not, we'll go on to the financial report. Kathy?
This is a treat to have Cory here tonight serving, so, thank you.
On the spot.
Okay, thank you Cory.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, board members. Tonight, I will be presenting the revised budget, and we'll get to that in just a moment. But before we get to the revised budget, I'm going to go ahead and give our normal financial report to get that out of the way first. Before he was our enrollment chart, as of October 1st, we had 2,394 students. We had a few families move. We had one loss at the elementary, two at the middle school, and then a handful at the high school. At the high school, we had a semester change on, I think it was January 25th. And there's a schedule change with students if they do PSEO, so that's a common activity at our high school. And so again, we are real pleased with the stability of our enrollment this school year. Financial report through the end of January, we have received $14,088,000 for 36.6% of our revised budget revenues, which is $38,471,000. Expenditures so far this year through the end of January, we've expended $19,787,000 or 15.8% of our revised budget, $38,914,000. When we take a look at the COVID funding and revenue that was in the prior years and take that into consideration, we are real happy again with how our expenses and revenue are tracking this fiscal year. Okay. Any questions I should ask on the regular report? Okay. Well, go ahead and take a look at the high points of the revised 2324 budget. Again, this past summer in June, you as a board had approved a preliminary budget for this current school year. And now that we're in the middle of the school year, a lot of the unknowns that we weren't real sure about are much clearer. How many students we have, who's in our buildings, settlements of such sorts. The revised budget is based on updated information, our current enrollment, and also the current legislation that was approved for this school year. I wanted to take a moment to thank our School Board Finance Committee members. We met last Thursday morning, and we went through this budget in great detail. So thank you for your time, Ralph, Brian, and Lauren. Please, you can sit. Okay. The district enrollment is the key factor to the operational budget. This slide gives a five-year overview of our enrollment history. Last school year, we graduated 215 students, so our adopted budget was set for 2,383 students. And we're really pleased in this revised budget that we will be adding in 20 additional students that we hadn't forecasted being here. So we're planning on this revised budget of being 2,403 students. Again, this kind of gives a comparison of the prior, or, excuse me, the adopted budget, again, 2,383 versus 2,304. High school students are weighted at 1.2, so again, a gain of 20, actually in weighted students, is a gain of 22. These enrollments that we had just talked about were all, again, factored into our revised revenue calculations and incorporated into our software. We received $7,138 per weighted student. Again, this current school year legislation gave us a 4% increase. The new student counts also were reflected in our categorical aids. Wanted to remind the board, an important factor in this budget is this is our final year of receiving the operating levy at Step 1. So next year, again, will be Step 2. We received additional cross subsidy aid, which was very helpful. It was funded at a much better level, still not 100%. We did update that with better projections from the state. We recognized our lease levy early, which is allowed by law. And we made adjustments to our federal revenue. We felt we were wrapped up with COVID funding. We did have a few more dollars that we were able to capture, as well as a grant. And then lastly, we also in this budget updated our local revenue. We have actual receipts, parking fees, other miscellaneous revenues, donations. The two larger items that are most noteworthy is, we have a very large playground project at our Hilltop Elementary, and they had a tremendous amount of fundraising. So again, our donations were a lot higher. They received a grant from Henepin County, again, that was accounted for that we didn't know about last summer. And the last item is interest rates. Our interest rate revenue is much higher than we had projected back in June, and so we are able to increase that revenue line item as well. We've been taking a closer look at revenue in the federal area over the last few years. It's maybe not as critical, but I still left it in. I think it's important to take a look at how the revised budget took a look at the federal revenue. Across the top shows our standard federal funding. Again, Title I, Title II, special education. We typically receive, as you can see, about $800,000 per year. We had better funding for special education, some carryover for Title II, and then lastly, a grant that was received. So we'll be updating our standard revenue and the revised budget by about $80,000. The lower part is our COVID funding. On the far left-hand column is what we received last school year. We have our adopted budget, revised budget, and then the difference between the two. And you can see the long line of zeros. You can see that we felt we were wrapped up with COVID funding. And again, if there was any districts that left any dollars untapped, they were available, and it didn't matter if the grant was $179,000. We went after that. So again, we have a little bit trinkling over about $28,000. So again, from the revised budget as compared to the adopted, it's just a little over $100,000 more. Okay. This next slide gives a glimpse of our general fund revenue by source. Each year, and in prior years, we collect about two-thirds of our revenue from the state of Minnesota. We're very dependent on the state. About 30% of our revenue comes from property taxes, and federal and local revenue make up the balance. So again, there's not a lot of disparity or change over the last two years, but I think it's helpful to see where our dollars come from. Okay. In addition to updating the revenue, we also updated all of the expenditures in this revised budget. Again, last summer, we didn't know, we didn't have all of our hiring done. We didn't have all of our contracts settled. So this revised budget is based on actual staff, with our teachers, individuals, and our nonlicensed groups. Again, with not knowing staff, we didn't know insurance plans that folks were taking. We have actual information on that, or closer now. In this revised budget, we always save earmarked dollars for lane changes for our faculty. We always have a staffing contingency if our students need support. And lastly, we update utilities, insurance, and others to trend, as well as our operating capital and LTFM projects. The other change in this budget was our land purchase. We were fortunate to hire, or to find a adjoining piece of property. We closed on that on July 7th, I believe. And so, because that fell into this year, we recorded the budget. And this year, when our audit was finished, we did earmark and save about $480,000 in an assigned fund balance to pay for that land. This slide gives an overview of where the district spends the revised budget by program. And this is a slide I always enjoy doing. It indicates to me that the district's doing a great job of spending as many dollars as they can in the classroom. You look at regular instruction, special ed, pupil support, instructional support, vocational instruction, extracurricular. When I compare the percentages to the prior year, again, that same mission of getting dollars to the classroom is evident. This graph shows the prior history of the general fund, unassigned and assigned fund balance. Again, I feel like this is another point of pride, good stewardship, and fiscal responsibility shown. With the revised budget, we plan to grow the unassigned fund balance by just under $36,000. We're planning on an ending fund balance of just over $5.1 million, which equates to 13.19% of our, excuse me, of our total expenditures. And this stays right pretty smack dab in the middle of our fund balance goal, which is between 8 and 18%. Again, we monitor this very closely with our financial planning model, with our District Finance Committee, and the long-term planning and forecasting is a top priority. In addition to general fund, obviously, general fund is our largest. We also manage and account for eight other funds, so I will go through those. We have our ending fund balance, what we're expecting for revenue and expenditures, as well as where we're forecasting to be at the end of the school year. The first fund is Student Activity Fund. This is monies that our students fundraise for and manage through co-curricular, extracurricular activities. Examples would be Wolf Ridge, DECA, Student Senate. Again, they're planning on a balanced budget in our Activity Fund for those groups. Food Service. They are forecasting a small fund balance gain. The West Tonka Foodies have done a great job, have been very creative, especially during the pandemic. They will be using some of their fund balance this year to update some of their equipment. Silver lining of the pandemic that I'm really pleased this year is our students are not charged for breakfast or lunch. That's part of the new legislation through the Department of Nutrition. Community Education. Our Community Education Fund houses Adventure Club, youth after-school enrichment, adult programming, West Tonka Activity Center, early childhood programs, adult basic ed, early childhood family ed, preschool screening, just to name a few. Our Community Education Department is in solid rebuilding mode since the pandemic, and you can see what their fund balance, they're just continuing to chip away at rebuilding their fund balance. Their mission is to offer exceptional programming to our community, and again, to restore the fund balance. Building Construction. This is a new fund for us. We haven't had this for a while. And when we set our adopted budget in June, we did not know if our November 11th, or, excuse me, November 7th election would pass. It indeed did. And so, thus, we have a revised budget opening up our new construction fund. All of our construction funds are tracked separately, and we account for those in a different fund, so they're not intermixed with general fund. We had the first of our two bond sales, which we were really pleased with the rate that we received. Those funds came in on February 1st. The revenue accounts for the first bond sale, the interest income, and the expenditures. You can see that there, we start off slow. There's a lot of design, but those are reflecting any expenditures that we'll have between now and June 30th. So when we come back for the adopted budget for next school year, you'll see a lot more construction, which means a lot more expenses, which will be very exciting. A couple other funds. Debt Service. Debt Service is the fund where we manage our principal and interest payments for our refinanced 2012 bonds, our 2016 building bond for the WAC and the PAC, and lastly, the 2018 abatement bonds, which we levy for each year. The Trust Fund is a smaller fund that we use to track our scholarships, receipts, and payments. This last spring, Mount West Tonka High School issued over $250,000 worth of scholarships. And you can see our budget is about 90, so we only track a portion of those. Some of the donors give directly to the students, and some ask for us to be the fiscal agent. So this trust budget accounts for those that we track here in-house. So this trust budget accounts for those that we track here in-house. And the last two funds are Internal Service. Internal Service Fund is our self-insured dental and health insurance. Our projections are showing another steady year of growth in our insurance programs. Our insurance programs have done so well that this current school year, the current budget that we're in, we had a 0% increase for medical and dental. Our employee benefit committee and our advisor closely monitor these transactions and claims and revenue each month. The last fund is our OPEB. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. This was bonded for and paid for several years ago, and it tracks our benefit responsibilities to our retirees and also our implicit rates. So at the end of the school year, we're planning on having just under $3.5 million for future obligations earmarked. Okay, that concludes the revised budget for general fund, and actually, in all the funds. In this slide, I know it's a little bit difficult to read, it's in your board packet, but it gives a glimpse on one page of our entire revised budget. Again, this will be on our district website, and you're welcome to contact me for a copy later on your agenda. You will be, there will be an action item listed to take action on this revised budget. And with leading into that, just a couple more slides. Once the revised budget is done, the next thing we immediately start doing is working on next year's budget for the '24, '25 school year. Again, we'll be working really closely with our finance committee. The slide before you shows the beginning assumptions that we're planning on. We're looking at 2,385 students. Again, we have another 200, a pretty large senior class. We're watching our kindergarten roundup figures. Right now, we're planning on 170 students. We do know with the last legislative session that we will be receiving 2% increase from the state this year. As I mentioned earlier, next school year, we'll have our second step of our operating referendum, which will be very helpful. And with that is included an inflation factor. We have added capital projects revenue of over $530,000. And that is tied to our net tax capacity, so that shows the positive growth of our community. And lastly, we have earmarked that we'll be receiving some additional compensatory revenue that is tied to our free and reduced counts. Expenditures, we're putting assumptions in for all of the groups that are not settled. Some of our groups are done, so we know when those will be. We always save an earmarked dollars for staff contingency. We're not sure about health and dental, but at this point in the beginning stages, we're planning on an 8%, which is, we feel is kind of a trend for those insurance programs. And all other expenses, we are looking at a 3%. But we are making sure that we add into this adopted budget, the capital projects expenditures. There's some bigger projects that are tied to the capital projects, additional revenue that we'll be receiving. Okay, almost done here. The next step is that we talked about at our finance committee is to set a budget goal. And we are recommending a budget goal of $50,000. This is part of our annual strategy to ensure good fiscal accountability and to make sure that the second step of our levy will sustain us for as long as possible. The board is also very strategic and wise with assigning dollars to maintain class size and special education. And it's our sole, our goal to preserve those fund balances as well. When we set up the financial planning model, it showed a variance of positive $800, a little over $800,000. And again, that's primarily because of the second step of the levy, which we are being very conservative, very cautious with for future use. Again, the assigned fund balances, we are keeping a close monitor on those. And again, a lot of the variables, whether it be enrollments, retirements, again, we're keeping a real good pulse on those and always keeping in mind our fund balance policy of 8 to 18%. And in closing, just as a reminder, we have a budget goal that we'll set tonight, the revised budget approval. We have a very important meeting in March for staffing for next year. We have a very busy board finance committees this spring. And then lastly, this will all kind of tee up for our adopted budget. Well, I'll be back on June 10th to present budget for the next year. And with that, I thank you for your patience in going, listening to all of that. And I welcome any questions or Superintendent Borg, I welcome you to make any comments as well that I may have missed.
I think Kathy did a nice job presenting. I appreciate the finance committee and your work with us. I think notables, as you mentioned, interested better. Student enrollment this year did better. I think the big effort for the district right now is to manage expenses over these next couple of years so we can be able to continue to run the programs that we'd expect us to run. And so we feel very thankful for the second step of the levy, but that won't carry you alone. And so it really is the discipline of managing our expenses and paying attention to enrollment.
Kathy, I had a question about the compensatory revenue from a few slides back.
Sure.
Wasn't that usually tied to families filling out the free and reduced lunch paperwork?
Yeah, I'm actually glad you brought that up. Yes, we formally received compensatory revenue based on people filling out free and reduced forms. Now that meals are paid for, it's kind of hard to ask families to, I mean, we still ask, but they're a little bit reluctant to think, well, I'm going to get a free lunch anyway. And so we still encourage people to send those in. A lot of our funding is tied to that title, especially the federal dollars. But they didn't hold harmless because of the change, the model. And what they're going to be moving towards is, they're called direct certification. So if people are on assistance with the county and maybe have food support at home, that's how they'll fund it in the future. But right now, there's a hold harmless, and it was favorable for us to have that method versus the old method.
Has there been any talk on the free and reduced lunch? Because they said this is ending up costing them way more than they want to. Is this going to be a short-term solution?
I hope not. We, you know, get, watch the legislative updates, but it has been nice. We've had, you know, great success with our programs. I think more kids are coming to school, eating breakfast, they're eating lunch. And I can't help to think that it probably makes them, you know, more attentive in class. And so it's hard to predict that. That's a great question, Gary, but we'll see. I'm hoping they can.
So I got my partner here helping us out tonight, and it was good timing. As he brings this up tonight, it's my pleasure to invite Corey Wolfe. He is our Director of Technology Services here in the district. And we'll give Corey some time just to show a little of what he does here for us. But he's been here almost 12 years. And what I appreciate in this guy is his attention to detail, always looking forward to what's coming over the hill, and always being prepared. And he serves us well. And you know this so much in our personal lives when it comes to technology. When it's working, we don't think a thing about it. When it goes down, it goes down, and it wreaks havoc. And we know that in our classrooms, we are so dependent on Wi-Fi networks, devices working well, that it's really Corey and his team that does that work. So this slide right up here, just to give you just a high-level overview. When he came here in 2022, he was tasked with a number of things, from making sure that our infrastructure and support is adequate, is actually robust, making sure the equipment that we have is running smoothly every single day. And the big one that we hear a lot about now is cybersecurity. And it's not only in the business world, it has hit K-12 education. And there's a few poster childs out there, and we never want to be in that place, ever. And so he focuses a lot on that. He leads our IT department, his staff, he'll talk about that a little bit tonight. And then he's constantly in connecting with our building principals and making sure things are running smoothly day-to-day in our school sites. And then the other important thing that we don't think a lot about, you know, we purchase a lot of technology. It's Chromebooks, iPads, it's computers, all these things to make education run well. And he has a very methodical process to make sure, one, we get the right equipment, we have strong inventory, and we get the best price on things that we purchase. So I invited Corey here tonight to give us some updates on what he does, and glad you're here.
So thank you. I know at the bottom of this slide here, it says, I know it's all of us, it's really a cybersecurity, devices, everything that we do. I want to thank you guys and the leadership here, because it is everyone that makes it work. It's not one person or the team. But it does really help a lot that I'm integrated and working and reporting with Mark as he's with the teaching and learning and curriculum, that we're able to see what they're wanting in the classroom, and we're able to provide and get in front of that to try to, you know, build the highway for the cars that will be coming. So the next slides here, just a couple of slides, I just wanted to go through. These are three of the areas I'm going to touch base on that are from our '22 to 2025 tech plan. And one of them I want to talk about is the infrastructure side. And the infrastructure, I would, I use a lot of analogies, it's the highway. Those are the things that, you can have a lot of cars on the road, but if the highway's small, the cars are going to get in a traffic jam. What they wanted to highlight with this is the infrastructure is, we do review the staff and student devices in the classroom to understand what they want, so we can continue to build the right things out later. As COVID and other things, as we alluded to, it changed kind of the normal day-to-day operations and that, that changed what we needed to do. So it's really important that we know what's needed in the classroom for software and devices, that we're able to build that highway. Some of the other things that I'll highlight on for the infrastructure is the voice-over-IP system. That's our current phone system, even with the pandemic and everything that happened recently, that really exposed to other ideas of how people want to work, how they connect, and what we can do to support that. And that's something that's coming up, that we're going to look for increasing that functionality and that availability to where we're, even if you're at home, you can look like you're in the district contacting parents and having that connection there. So that's, that's a big need. Even today, cloud systems as they are, we're leveraging that more and more because it allows any more anytime, anywhere access. And a lot of those services are able to support the hardware that you need and are updating them more than us buying it personally and doing it. There is a service model that there is a cost for that, but it outweighs, I mean, that definitely outweighs what you're paying and what you get for anytime, anywhere access. So not only for curriculum like Schoology, Destiny, other pieces, even our Skyward HR Finance payroll system, it's also our district services that we are now scaling some of our services and servers out in the Azure environment that builds a redundancy that we're able to actually try to build out and fail over to that site. So that's something we're working on. Wireless solution itself, it's doing well. As you know, I would relate wireless as the cars, a lot of different cars. Christmas comes, a lot more cars come in the building. Internet of Things, wearable technologies, other pieces like that. Sometimes that technology is really good, but sometimes it's a little older that it slows things down. And my analogy I can best put to that is, you can have a four-lane road that every car wants to do 70 miles an hour. If you've got four cars that are doing 40, guess what, everybody slows down. And that's the things that we're working on to try to make sure we raise our standard of the equipment that we allow, that we don't allow the 40 mile an hour car on there and let us all go 70. And then part of that is the network switch and infrastructure that we want to really focus on with the security side, but also build the highway. Next piece I just want to talk through is the hardware side. One thing that I've started last year is I've started to meet with all of the building technology teams, including the TIL teams for the elementary. Some of my team members also meet, like at Grand View with those technology teams. And then monthly, we meet with the high school media specialists and things like that. And getting to know what they want to talk about and what they're hearing versus what we're seeing in support and tech tickets, it's very cyclical. It's very nice to be able to vet that stuff through to see what's coming or not, and that's really nice. And I know one thing we mentioned earlier is I do meet monthly with all the building principals to also talk about not only tech items, but what things that they're experiencing there too. So again, trying to do the 360 view. Some of the things that we do handle in that classroom is, you know, we do review the hardware and software and other things that they're using, what's working, what's not working. And one thing that we've been able to leverage is, we started to learn when we adopted elementaries to using an Apple TV and TV solution, the way you taught and the way you interacted with the technology was different. We were able to work with Apple, and they actually brought onsite curriculum person that helped us use their tools with what we're doing, and it's free. And it's something that they're available anytime, anywhere, and you can really try to leverage that resource. So that's something we really like that. We're trying to look for other things that we can do with that too. Collaborating test classroom solutions and pilots, real-world experience is really what we're speaking to the elementaries. We can, someone can say, I want a different screen. We can get a different TV in the room, but when you put that TV in, if it's not loud enough, if it's not bright enough, if you have a room that has more windows versus not, it looks good right away until you use the day in the life. That's another thing that we've really been able to capture and gain from that. That's why we value that. And then one thing we've also been able to do is integrate a cost-effective digital signage solution in both of our middle school and high school. And it's been really nice, and I know, we are a Google district, it's a Google solution, so it integrates well. Granted, Google kind of gives you what they're going to give you. There'll be challenges with some of that, but it's been nice to be able to do that, and the staff is like that too. Last thing I'll just highlight on then is the technology security. And as you know, last couple of years, we've really been focusing on cybersecurity. We're kind of in the Phase II side of things, and I'll kind of highlight some of that. But we've been partnering with Pivot Logic, and they're kind of our virtual CISO. So Chief Information Security Officer, they allow us to give us some guidance on what we're doing and what's being done. And we work with Article, which is a security operations center. And the best way I can tell you there is, there's a lot of people that know a lot of things out there. We send them our firewall logs, fire scan, our, when people log in, those logs, and we look for events that look suspicious, things that are there, and they automatically get queued to us as an immediate ticket to me and the tech team. And we try to act on those things, not only just actions that are happening today with vulnerabilities that are happening with software updates, other pieces like that.
I have a question. Do you ultimately monitor, are you the frontline monitor that then you decide to send those logs to these folks to examine?
Yeah, so we've partnered with that, and we've picked the core pieces of equipment that we're using that we send it to them. So they go through, I'd probably say 25 million or more logs a month that they're constantly parsing, looking at, and looking for things that are there. And then those things get prioritized, and if things are real, then a ticket comes back to me and my network admin that we start to look at that and see what we need to do. And lastly, is KnowBefore, and that kind of highlights into the next section. KnowBefore is our security awareness tool that we're using. It's really a tool that provides videos, resources, and we use it as a phishing campaigns that we're able to send these materials out to staff to try being exposed to these things that you can see, learn it, and learn from it. We've done, what do I want to say, a survey on it, and there's like seven top areas. We were able to identify across the district, the lowest scoring three areas that we were able to just provide last month additional training on those three lowest scored areas to try to raise our awareness. Because as you know, we all get email. I could click something and open it, or the next person could too. So it's, we're all out on the front lines on that. And the other thing I would highlight with that, we do send out two different monthly emails that do kind of tips and tricks and also scams of the month. So as tax season comes up, these are real things that KnowBefore and those product lines are seeing that they're saying, be aware of this or not. We're also developing quarterly security reports to review the current state of the district, and that kind of goes along with, Brian's a member of the Information Security Committee. We're working on building our policies and procedures and other things that we're making sure we're aligning not only the devices, but the policies and how we're going to handle it if something would happen. And we're working hard on that. And then the other thing is, we do quarterly internal and external scans that we schedule someone to do on the outside. It's not us doing it and getting the results. It's an outside entity that does and then gives us those reports, and we try to scrutinize those things and improve. And then that's all I have. And then I, that's all I have. If there's any comments or questions.
Is the information security team does exist already or it's in the process of?
It's, it's existing today.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yep.
That was just started.
Just started, yep.
Just started a few months ago.
Yep.
I want to say thank you for all you do. Because I mean, you keep us up and running and things flow very smoothly. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for presenting. I think it's really important that people hear what we're doing. It's, it's, you know, wide ranging and I think it's very effective. And we're staying out of, out of the news, which is good. I think more people should know how great of a job you guys do at this.
Thank you.
Remind me again that rollout of the FirstNet system?
So the FirstNet, we just rolled those out at the beginning of this, well, middle of January. So that all the buildings have those today. We're working on getting the additional training and the setup and that. Because they call it a corporate admin tool. A lot of the buildings know your staff and devices and the flow of your communications. We're allowing them and providing them training that they can develop and change their talk groups as needed. But really it's a push to talk anytime, anywhere access that it's not only surrounded by our building, but it uses the AT&amp;T network that allows you anytime, anywhere if there's a cell phone.
Cool. So it's rolled out already.
Yep.
With the new, the redesign of the high school, is that going to open up new possibilities for different technology, infrastructure? I'm sure you're thinking about that.
Yep, yeah. So the first thing that we're doing is the voice system is probably the next thing. We're trying to scale it out so it makes sense to do them across. The next thing will be, yes, there'll be some additional depending on the growth of the building. There'll be IT closets and other pieces. Some of our IT closets, cooling and the access of them should be improved on some of that. But it'll be really good. Really the next thing will be is the highway's getting bigger and faster and wider. So we just got to scale to that.
And I think Corey's talking now from an infrastructure standpoint, but clearly the design of the classroom to some of the technology for some of the vocational programming, et cetera. There'll be a number of things that we'll be looking at. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Corey. I just have one, one last thing here for the team I've been toward that I'll bring up. Tonight is our annual, at the bottom of the screen, resolution of concurrence or non-concurrence with our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. There's a lot of big words about, well, what is that and what is this about? And just in summary, our American Parent, American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, their job is to advocate for American Indian students. It's also to bring families together, support their needs, also provide enrichment, cultural activities for those students. We have about 33 American Indian students here in the district now. And what this concurrence, this vote that the committee does is that it's through state statute. And the state wants to make sure that when you have more than 10 American Indian students in your district, you have this committee. And, and some of the things the committee does is sponsor different events that I have listed here. It's all about advocating for American Indian students, providing cultural activities, supports, whatever that, that may be. So that leads to what is called the resolution of concurrence or non-concurrence. And basically it's a vote by the committee that says, yes, the school district is supporting American Indian students. It's following through with what it says it's going to do. We vote in concurrence. If the vote was non-concurrence, then there's a process that they would formally address the school board with what is it that needs improvement? And then the school board would take that information and give a formal response back. That's how the, the system works. That's how the process works. So on January 9th, 2024, American Indian Parent Advisory met and they had their form, formal vote. It was a unanimous vote of concurrence. So tonight in your consent agenda, the board is asked to acknowledge and approve the attached resolution of concurrence adopted by the American Indian Parent Advisory, given the end January 9th, 2024. So that's the formality for tonight. What I'd say in my own words is that we have a wonderful committee of dedicated parents that truly support our American Indian students. And I think they're doing a fine job with this work. So you report?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we'll start. February is school board appreciation. And so I hope you enjoyed that. Brought in the big entertainment break. But I, I do want to say just a couple of things. One, our students, our staff, our families. Not everyone can appreciate like anybody, the day in, day out of what all happens, but they definitely appreciate schools that are focused on continuous improvement. And I think your leadership is one that directs us that way, pushes us that way. And it takes a lot of strength. Strength as an effort, but also strength then as discipline of just moving us forward. And so I appreciate not only the support, but obviously the push of how we have to continue to take next steps. And I feel very fortunate to work under a school board that's so constructive and focused in that direction. So thank you. The students made cards thanks to Emily in organizing some of this. And as you leave on our sign, there's your picture and an appreciation of that as well. But hopefully you're getting a little bit of recognition for your effort. Second, I just want to say to Corey who presented, Corey does a lot of behind the scene work. And this is true with our whole team. But speaking of Corey, sometimes those reports come to you at 2:00 in the morning. Sometimes it's at the worst time on a Saturday where you're at one of your kid's event. And when something is down, that needs to be dealt with immediately by anyone that's experiencing it. And not always can we deal with it immediately, but we know how dependent on technology we've become. And so I think he's really led us in a way of how do we have redundancies? So when it does go down, we have a way to keep on going. I think he's also applied, whenever you talk to security, there's a balance. There's always more, there's always more you can spend to do. But trying to find what's the reasonable effort that a school district takes to protect our data, to protect our students, to protect our time that we have with students. And so the thing I can tell you about Corey is he really does care. And he puts our students and our staff and our families ahead of, of his own many weekends when things are being challenged or we're working through it. Kathy gave a great report today. And I, I, some of you on the board have been here a long time where budgets, budgets were difficult. And the reason why our budgets have been, I would say, more consistent is we treat every day as a difficult day of just making sure we spend dollars as well as we can. And there's always a way for improvement. I'll be sending out a communication this week just encouraging staff and families. If they have thoughts on how we can be more efficient with dollars or if they have ideas of how we can apply better practices, we want that feedback and we want to think about that. This year we have a goal of 50,000. It's really about the effort and the discipline of making sure you're challenging your expenses. And so Kathy and her team has done a great job of letting us know where we're at. We're very thankful for the community's support of the second step of the levy. But we also know that you can't, you can't lit up on the gas of just really managing your expenses in a district. With that, we have two contracts up for your approval. We have Mike Kennick here with 4.0, Mike Jensen with Jenco. And just really appreciate the, the efforts that they bring to transportation, the safety that we have. And then also with our grounds. I think they do a lot of effort, not just for safe, but also just making sure that our kids have the opportunities that we're proud of. And would thank you both for your commitment with both of these owners. I feel very comfortable talking to them, figuring out how we can do things different and make revisions. And so it's, I bring those contracts to you with appreciation for their service and thankful that we continue to work together. We have a design update for you continually through our, our bond work. We're working again, just as a reminder, the tennis courts and Hilltop Shirley Hills and the early learning security. And then the bus garage, some maintenance. That's what our projects over the summer are out. Reminder on tennis courts, when we talked about location, how to approach that, we started giving very distinctly where that location would be in the March. And we talked about how, one, our courts are in need of maintenance and they have to be redone. They're original, going back to the eighties. And we have to reconstruct and rebuild those. And we also talked about going from nine to 12. And the reason why we're doing that is just the number of kids that are engaged in this activity and having space for them and looking at where the conference was. And when we looked for locations for that, we thought parking right next to Thaler and where that stadium's going to go in our student lot. You want your parking to be close for those people because that's what's, what's the preference. And so we looked at spaces for where the tennis courts could go. And we chose that group by the bus garage. We're going to try to put our parking on the front side of that so it can support the stadium, school, events. And so we like that. And it's a space where that can fit. And so that's one part of the project. We're also going to line eight of those courts with pickleball. With the security at Hilltop Shirley Hills and early learning, we are continuing in our design phase. We are very appreciative of local law enforcement, fire department, of their engagement with us in this process. And they'll continue to be engaged as we work on our designs. I think with the bus garage maintenance, some of that is a smaller part of this project. Each step is, is important. We're also working on the high school redesign and the Grandview redesign at this moment. Just would make one comment on the high school redesign is when we look at the metals and machining and we look at Woods and our nursing program and our engineering of how that can connect with our robotics, there's some phenomenal opportunities for kids. And in a district our size, we really got to choose what programs are we going to run and which ones we're not. We still have a relationship with Hennepin Tech. It's really important that we do because there's programs where we might have three, four, or five kids that are interested in a program. We want to give them that opportunity. But we can't run every program. One, you don't have space and you don't have the enrollment for the kids to support that. You're not going to be able to staff partial FTEs. So you really have to choose. And we're really proud of our choice. We're proud that Woods has been a popular program. We're going to expand that into construction. For metals, we think there's a lot of different opportunities, which currently we're touring different districts. We had a great round table with people that are in the field this past week where we brought in 25 people from our community talking to us about that program, of how we can have a phenomenal metals program. And then lastly with nursing, now we see Lake Minnetonka Shore is very interested in CNA program. And you can think about staffing challenges. And those are people that are going to be working directly in our community. And so also you look at shortages of EMT and that that's going to be here. So we really like the choices that we made. Of course, there's always more in addition, but how you staff it, if you can get enrollment, you just can't keep on adding more and more programs in our district. And so that's how we called out, is the value to the community and the value to our students. With it, we feel like we've built into this bond the dollars that are going to design nice facilities for those, those programs. And so there's a lot currently being discussed with the high school and the middle school. It's exciting work. We'll continue to carry that out this spring. But again, in our communication that started a long time ago, we pointed out everything from the maintenance, the safety, et cetera. There was a question about safety and grants. One thing I can tell you about grants is it's a great thing that needs to be investigated. But one thing you have to investigate when you look at a grant is what are the conditions of the grant? And is that guiding you in a direction that's right for your district and where you want to go? The second thing is some of the parameters around a grant and some of the competitiveness. And are you a likely recipient of such grants? Do you meet the demographics? Then it's also just the cost benefit of what's the competitiveness for the grant and the time that it takes. But we look at those. Definitely we apply for grants. And I would say to the community, if anybody has ideas of grants, always send that to us. We look to, but sometimes people find out about some unique opportunities and we'd want to investigate that. But it does have to be put through a lens. It has to be through a lens of, is that the direction we truly want to go? Is that something that actually is, we're going to qualify for? And then lastly, the competitiveness and the time that it takes for some of those grants has to be investigated. In this agenda, you're going to see that we're prepared that we could hit enrollment level in grade five next year. So we're putting on an open enrollment cap for grade five, like we did for seventh grade and Transition Plus. And then the only other thing that I would highlight we have coming up is School Bus Appreciation Day is February 21st. We are very thankful, not only through 4.0, but just the people that are, are drivers that have come to us, that they've prioritized this work and that we haven't had an interruption with service. You've seen that across the state, across the nation, and that we did not experience that. It speaks volumes of the company, but it also speaks volumes of our drivers. And so not only is it safe, but we're able to have them here and we appreciate that. That is my report and let's see if questions.
The only thing I would suggest is we did have a speaker here tonight and had a lot of requests for things. I think in order to do those requests, that person should be required to formally put in the data request for that information versus just leaving out the list. So if Mr. Dottie wants answers to that, if you want me to contact him, then tell him that or if you want to. But I think he needs to put in the request, a written request for that person to leave out the list. So, okay. All right. The chair moves for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the discussion items. Discussion item 7A, resolution to close grade five to open enrollment for the 24-25 school year. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item 7B, approval of the 23-24 revised budget. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Chair moves for approval of action item 7C, approval of the budget goal for fiscal year 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item 7D, approval of transportation contract with 4.0 school services. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And chair moves for approval of action item 7E, approval of grounds contract with Jenco property management. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And chair moves for approval of action item 7F, approval of the School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. There should be many of those days for those. Is, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right. Bus driver appreciation day will be February 21st. And any other items to bring up? Anybody? Chair moves for German. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Everybody have a good, good week.